I hope everyone's had a minute to look at the agenda from the meeting from last month, so if there's just any motion to approve that, please.
Motion to approve the meeting last month.
One second. All in favor? Any opposed? Also, the special call meeting, I need a motion on it also, please.
Motion made.
One second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Well, the first thing we have tonight on the agenda is we have the young lady here with us tonight. She's a senior at Russell County High School and has been working on a project. And this has to do with the homeless. And we're happy to have her here because she's going to present that program to us tonight. So, if you all would welcome, please, this is Madeline Wright.
I'm here today to speak about permanent housing for the chronically homeless. Hi, my name is Madeline Wright. I'm a senior at Russell County High School. Throughout high school, I've taken engineering classes and developed many skills and ideas that have assisted me with this project. Using my prior knowledge, research, and prototypes, I've crafted a solution that will lessen the effects of chronic homelessness across America. What is the problem? Well, homelessness is defined as a state of having no home. And this is a very broad spectrum to try to target. So, I've narrowed mine down to chronic homelessness, which is a state of reoccurring homelessness for a year or longer. Chronic homelessness makes up 22% of the homeless population. That's over 120,000 people. These people are physically and mentally disabled. They're suffering from addictions and illnesses. These are the people that cannot take care of themselves on their own. So, let's look at another effect. Chronic homelessness affects more than just the individual. It's a drain on economic resources. In 2015 alone, over $8 billion was spent to decrease the numbers of homeless. And while there was a slight decrease in that year, from then on, since 2016 to now, there's only been an increase in the numbers. And still, each year, billions of dollars are being poured into this industry and to supposedly helping these people, and yet we're not seeing results. So, you may be wondering why? Well, the money is being spread too thin throughout the United States. And it's being focused on small projects that do not help enough to make a reasonable impact. It doesn't target enough people. So, let's summarize the problem. Homelessness has only risen within the last few years. Billions of dollars are being spent each year, and yet the outcomes oftentimes offer little to no consequence or change. The money is spread too thin and used in ways that yield little results. My intent is to focus the money into larger projects that house more homeless while repurposing abandoned buildings. My solution. Permanent housing. What is it? Permanent housing is long-term housing that offers assistance and security to its residents. Now, I understand that when you hear the term permanent housing, you think, this is my tax money being poured into homes that people are going to take advantage of. They're going to live their good old lives and nothing, but they could be doing something and earning their own money. But that's not the case with this. These people cannot take care of themselves. These are the people that they're going to end up on the streets if they're not given the help that they deserve because they suffer from these disabilities, addictions, and illnesses. And my project also, you have to understand that my project is working towards getting these people to where they can live on their own. For some, that will not be an option, and that's just something we have to face. But there will be those that can learn these skills, learn coping mechanisms, things like that, and they'll be able to re-enter society and they'll be able to live on their own. So, let's talk about repurposing buildings. To define repurposing buildings, it's basically converting old buildings into structures that serve a new purpose. Now, if you may be wondering why, why repurpose old buildings when we can just build them and completely come up with our own setup and make it exactly how we want it? Well, that's quite wasteful, and it's a lot more money than what has to be spent. To build a new, it's just so expensive, especially nowadays. Like, everything is expensive. As a high school senior, I find myself terrified looking for work. So, I really tried to pay attention to ways I could lessen the cost of this project. So, and repurposing buildings is one way to do that. So, let's dive deeper into repurposing buildings and the process of it. So, first, we can start with inspections. Obviously, you have to inspect the building, figure out what the problems are, what needs to change. And then, we consider building codes, licenses, and permits, what we need to make the changes we want. And then, you would make the changes. We would remodel and modernize it. We would get what we need in the building, and then we would get the comforts that we enjoy. But, so let's dive deeper into each step. So, first, you inspect. You're going to want to look at my list here, and that is what we will be diving into when we're looking through this. Then, we have to consider the building codes and permits and licensing. You have to pay close attention to wherever you are because everywhere you go, when it comes to these building codes, we differ. And then, permits and licenses. I understand that I have not listed all of them, but there are too many to list. You have to have permits and licensing for just about everything nowadays. So, moving on to the third step, remodeling and modernizing. So, we need to remodel and improve the building out of repair the necessities, the plumbing, the electrical, the structure. We need to know what needs to be added, and we need to do it. And then, we need to modernize it. We need to change, give them the comforts of life that they've been deprived. So, let's talk about my setup. Given the fluid nature of the project and the fact that no building we remodeled would be the same, I came up with my own prototype. And you have to understand, actually, you have to understand that 32,000 square feet, see, I know that's a ton. That's a huge space. As people who rent apartments and live in homes, we don't think about the size. This size seems incredibly unreasonable. But you have to understand that we're taking factories, schools, all of which have been a building, and these buildings are built to be huge. They range, they range in sizes from 15,000 square feet to 100,000 square feet. So, moving forward, let's look at each floor that I have selected. So, the first floor will possess two elevators which will travel to each floor. And if you want to compare, look, I have my 3D models built and ready for entrance. And here is a layout of each floor. You can see over here, I have my sizing, and over here, I have the label. So, we will have an entrance that will be monitored by security to maintain a safe and secure environment. We will have bathrooms that will be separated by gender, cafeteria, a physical therapy area, locker rooms. We have visiting rooms, a common area, and elevators that will travel to every floor. Moving to the second floor. So, the second floor will contain two bathrooms, six classrooms that also double as activity rooms, a daycare area, two therapy rooms, one group therapy room, four long-term care rooms, and bathrooms that are attached to each of those, as well as two checkup rooms. I also have the models up here if you want to look at them. Moving on to the third floor. The third floor will primarily act as a dormitory for the individual male and female residents. There will be, each room will need a key card to be accessed, as well as the bathrooms, which are set up to be a communal kind of college style. And you can see the sizes of rooms. They're incredibly small. You have to understand that for this project, the bedrooms are not meant to be what our bedrooms are today. They're not meant to be a place to, you know, just cool down from a long day. They're just a place to sleep. These people will have things to keep them busy throughout the day. They have communal areas that they can relax. Their bedrooms are just for the sleeping car. Moving on to the fourth floor. The fourth floor will be where families will reside. We have bedrooms. Each family will get one bedroom, and there's a bathroom that is shared between two families. And we also have a play area for the children, a common area, and a snack room. Now, let's talk about the cost of the project. Given the fluid nature of the project, given that I do not know what this model building will look like, and I wouldn't unless it were a real thing and I could expect it, I've had to provide a range of how much the remodeling could cost. And that would range anywhere from $960,000 to almost $4.5 million, which I understand that's a ton of money. That seems crazy. But you have to understand that there are billions of dollars being poured into this industry every single year. And this is just a way to focus that money to a single place that will help. This single place can provide housing for 232 people. That's with about 30 males, 60 women, 24 families that can pay both parents, and 36 children. That is a lot, that's larger than most facilities that people are spending millions of dollars to build. And it's doing so with materials that have already been used. And it's just, it's a smart way to use the money, even though it seems like a lot. And it doesn't seem like that's many people, but compared to a lot of other projects, it's pretty good. Let's talk about the staff. While the goal is to get these people self-sufficient, that is going to happen by having them help. They're not going to have staff doing 100% of the things. They're going to be helping in the cook, they're going to be helping with the cooking, they're going to be helping with the cleaning. They're going to maintain these things as they learn skills of life, but we still have to have staff that take care of it. So, let's look at the overview of my project. My project targets chronic homelessness in a manner that reduces costs and provides a space that can house hundreds at a time. It offers permanent housing to those that cannot survive on their own due to disabilities, addictions, and illnesses. My project allows chronic homelessness to become independent in the ways that they can while providing the help that they need. Thank you. Any questions?
I just did a lot of work that's been done here. I mean, gosh, did you do all the research and everything that went into this? And I'm thinking, how Waylon back here maybe can help me out here, but while she's going over this, what I'm thinking about is this funding that's supposed to be coming up through these 39 programs and stuff. Isn't living, family living, supposed to be one of the ones that they feel is the most sought out that should be applied for as far as?
There's a lot of housing money at Department of Local Government, the House of 723 in the past, housing is a number's quality.
And just from thinking about what she's talking about here, you know, there's seems to be that, that it looks like at the federal government and stuff, that they're looking at this same thing also, that there's going to, there needs to be places like that. And what you've done, and I see, is a lot of research that makes it more people be able to, you know, you're refurbishing those buildings that sit there for no use anyway into something that's useful. So, very good. I'm very impressed. So, I mean, you've done an excellent job. We appreciate you coming and sharing all this. And did anybody have questions for Madeline?
Appreciate all the work and study and building all of these models that you're.
Y'all want to look at that?
I'm very impressed.
They're lined up in order. It goes 1, 2, 3, 4. Don't y'all want to see this? It's pretty cool. I mean, it's had to be a lot of work, a lot of time.
I don't know how hard she works.
She knows.
Yeah.
Well, if there are no questions, then.
Is this, is this something that you, your senior high school, as you progress in your education, do you want to, what are you leaning toward?
Well, that's the thing, I'm really not sure right now.
Yeah, well, I just wondered if it had to do with, you know, architecture or engineering. Well, that or working with the people that need accommodations like this.
I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm all over the map right now.
That's all right. It's good.
I'm too afraid to tell you the truth.
But how did this get to be a passion with you?
Well, about over two years ago, I went to DC with my dad on a work trip. And I think we were walking somewhere in DC, you know, just, it was dark. And I think I looked up and I saw something, just this old abandoned building. They may have been doing something to it, but I was just like, you know, I was just like, you know, I've been thinking about the homeless because there's a ton of that in DC. It's hard to break it. And like, once you're there for so long, you become desensitized to it, and that bothered me, that bothered me too, you know? But I looked at this building, I was like, why aren't we taking buildings like this? Because they're everywhere. You don't go to a town nowadays without seeing at least one abandoned building, I feel like. And I was like, why aren't we taking these buildings and putting them to use? If there are so many, like, I don't know how to explain it, but that's just, and like, that just weighed on me. And when she talked about this class, she was telling us about maybe the end of last year. And I just thought, I went to her, I was like, can I come up with my own project and pursue it for this class? And she worked with me very well on it.
What class was that?
Engineering capstone. It's the first year we've ever done it.
Carol, you want to speak a little bit about that?
No.
Anything else?
I think everyone can tell Madeline will make a world better place no matter what she pursues.
Well, I think whatever she does, she's going to be successful.
Yes.
And, you know, this might be something you can pursue, you know?
Definitely be an adventure.
I'm getting told this in here, Jamestown had an old motel that was turned into a more of a, was it more a drug place? Or was that a homelessness? Kind of both, I think, you know? But yeah, this motel here in Jamestown, I don't know how many units it had, but it was all down. It was really in a bag, and they went in and repaired that. So, kind of what you're talking about there, just in a smaller version.
I mean, it's difficult, and I guess that's why a lot of people don't want to do it, but it's worth it, in my opinion. It would be worth it.
Well, I agree with you. Homelessness is a problem that our society needs to address, and there are solutions.
There are solutions. Just, I feel like we as a nation become so easily desensitized to it that it's almost hard to want to try for it. Which, we're only human.
Love that, Mike.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, very good. Very interesting, very glad and tickled to have you. And if you ever have anything else that you want to share with us, you just let us know, and we'll try to set you up because we enjoy it and we're glad to have you.
Appreciate your passion.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having me. I really, really appreciate it. If I only had you on, sure. It'd be nice.
At that age?
Oh, now. Take it down.
True.
Of course, we have Mr. Wilkerson who's here with us tonight, and I think if you want to.
If you have other, if you have other people you need, I'm willing to wait. I'm good.
It's probably up to you. We don't want to put you through all of it. You need to be, but if you're willing and willing.
If you guys know what's the time of year, I'm usually here begging. I'm here representing Artworks again for three purposes. One, to ask for contribution for our summer camp program, which we've done every year for the last few years. But also just to get an update on what's happening with Artworks. Many of you may be aware of the recent remodel of the, or Artworks on the Square, the big building. If you have the courage to go out there and peek in the door, it is a state-of-the-art facility now for silks program. And it has a place where you can sit up above the balcony for stage-type presentations. It is just phenomenal what they've done in there. Basically, they raised the roof inside. It's just really hard to describe. If you haven't, I encourage you to go over there and peek in the door. And maybe at some point, if you all would like, we could say at the time, we could come up and take a little tour through it. Obviously, we continue to do the work here with Artworks on Main. This is what we call Artworks on the Square, Artworks on Main. And it's shriveled in many, many students who have advantage of it. And then, thirdly, the recent work down at the creek, Artworks at the creek. I know if you know a lot, the road is almost in, they're working on it every day. We've got a new road that will, it's a limited access road, but that will allow students on buses or cars to come in and come out the existing roads. We don't, it's a very narrow road coming back through there. And that's very close to being done. We've also been having walk-in tours from the school, and we have a partnership with all of the Los Angeles schools, especially the three elementarys this fall, this spring, to have free programming that Artworks will provide to the schools. Because Art is one of those things that, which there's just a lack of funding these days, but we're going to provide at least on a limited supply, a limited basis to the schools. So, those are all the projects that are going on. And if you have any questions about it, then please reach out to me. I'd be happy to arrange a time for you to come down and take a look, and we can talk more about what's happening with Artworks. But immediate need, our summer camps are coming up. We like to offer as many scholarships as we can so that students that wouldn't otherwise be able to avail themselves of the opportunity. Can a team, last year, we, you were gracious enough to give us to sponsor 10 scholarships. Last year, they were $200, and this year, believe it or not, they're actually $195 or so. I was expecting to have to come through entries, but it's a small decrease, obviously, it's small. So, that's my request tonight, for the city to sponsor, as it had in the past, 10 scholarships for our summer camp program. And I'm throwing that out to you. And finally, I just want to say, what an awesome presentation. And this topic is so much of the news. I watched the state legislature all this past session, and this was a major, major topic. So, you're not, as you characterize, you're not just dealing with a local or even state law problems, it's a national problem. Kentucky really has to grapple with this. I would highly suggest that you get in touch with some of the legislature, some of the legislators, and let them know what you've got in mind. Because this is something that could be viable with the right kind of support and help, and really with an innovative approach. And I said, Tom, but one more thing. I am so proud of this community to drive through this town now on Thursday night or Friday night and to see what's happening. Artworks, yes, is a small part of it, but these restaurants that we have now, and just to see the square full of people. I've been proud of Jamestown since I was this tall, and I've always been proud of it. But today, I think, you know, we are really at a turning point, I think, for this community. We've always dreamed of having all the shops and all the, and we're never going to grow, it's never going to be the place where people come to town to shop for their clothes and their shoes. That's not going to happen again. But now that we have these anchor restaurants and Artworks and other things that are happening here in our community.
Libraries.
The library is doing wonders. I mean, it's much that you're going to maybe see some small retail, some possible goods shops and craft shops and things like that that might happen. We've been dreaming of that for years. It's here. It's here now. So, thank you. Thank you for your all's work and everyone who's been a part of that. And that's my speech.
I can contest to the building up in the alley because I went, Mr. Adams took me through that.
Yes, good.
Couple of weeks ago, and if you haven't seen it, you need to go see it. It's amazing. I couldn't believe the difference in that building of what they've done to it. It doesn't even, you know, it's a new building somewhere because it is, it's nice.
I recommend you go at nighttime and look in with the lights on and real job and all that going on, snaps, it's like new days. Donnie, I've got a question for you. Yes, I know we do sponsor 10 kids, and I'm sure the county and Russell Springs does, and maybe other. How far do those sponsorships go? I mean, are they, is there a sufficient number of sponsorships to meet the need?
Yes, yes, yes. In fact, we do solicit, as a matter of fact, Sean, I have two others. I have mine in my pocket. We each contribute. Well, I do one, and we ask board members to sponsor. So, yes, we do solicit, and there is, we do have a sufficient number, and we do monitor how we're giving out. We just don't do it at random after meeting certain economic criteria before they're awarded.
Well, I just want to make sure that you had a sufficient number of scholarships for the need.
Yes, yes. If you all can provide that, that would be, that would be great, yes.
Well, I make a motion, we sponsor 10 kids at Artworks.
That was pretty easy.
Thank you very much.
All in favor? Any opposed? So, yeah, we'll continue to do that, and like we do at the creek, that's reason.
Yeah, make sure, stick the road, when the road hits end, you've got to go down and take a look. It's really good.
What about the theater part? Is that?
Yes, that's still, that's the next project, the amphitheater, 202.
All right. Well, we appreciate it. I have heard Artworks has been a big part of Jamestown and keeps growing, and it takes us to death to see it for all of it. And we appreciate all of you doing, thank you all for doing it. So, we'll gladly do those scholarships and give it to you. Next thing we have on our budget is our amended budget. Tyler, if you have any ordinance.
An ordinance, 2024-001. An order adopting the City of Jamestown, Kentucky amended budget for fiscal year July 1, 2023, June 30, 2024, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriate funds for the operation of city government. Whereas amended budget proposal message has been prepared and delivered to the council, and whereas the city council reviewed such budget proposal and made necessary modifications, now therefore being ordained by the City of Jamestown, Kentucky that the amended budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and to June 30, 2024 is hereby amended and adopted as follows. amended numbers for balance forward, 23273. Total funds available, 1706573. Total appropriations, 1497550. Estimated fund balance, 209023. That was for the general fund. Utility fund. Total resources, 4313255. Total appropriations, 4313255. That estimate all funds back out for zero fund balance. That was the original numbers. amended to 3528000. Total available funds carried, 1367906. And total resources available, 4894906. Estimate all funds back out for a zero fund balance. Road 8, with amended, $60,00913 for total resources available. Estimate all funds back out for a zero fund balance for Road 8. Cemetery fund was the balance forward, was 4276. That was amended numbers. Total resources, 53296. Total partner appropriations, 5,000. Estimated fund balance, 48296. Alcohol money amended numbers. Total resources available, 141655. Estimate all funds back out for a zero fund balance as of June 30.
Thank you, Tyler. So, the next thing we have is our ordinance for the budget.
This is an ordinance, 2024-002. An order adopting the City of Jamestown, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025, by estimating revenues, resources, and appropriate funds for the operation of city government. Whereas the annual budget proposal message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council reviewed such budget proposal and made necessary modifications, now therefore being ordained by the City of Jamestown, Kentucky, the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and to June 30, 2025 is adopted as follows. Balance forward for the general fund, 232273. Total resources, 1715296. Appropriations, 1463850. Estimate fund balance, 251446. Utility fund was a zero fund balance forward. Total resources, 5062500. Estimate all funds back out for a zero fund balance. Road 8, zero fund balance forward, 92547 for total resources available. Estimate all funds back out for a zero fund balance as of 6302025. Cemetery fund, balance forward, 630 is $48,000. Total resources available will be 59020. Total appropriations, 5,000. Total appropriations, five thousand. Estimate fund balance is six, thirty, twenty twenty-five, fifty-four, oh, two, oh. Alcohol fund was zero balance four. Total resources available for the year, one, fifty-six, oh, six, oh. Estimate all funds back out for a zero fund balance as of June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
The next thing that we have, of course, we've been working on with Chris Johnson with the KLC, Kentucky Department of Cities, on our policies and procedures, which needed updated, needed revised, and need to be looked at. So we've been working on that now for quite a while, quite, probably a couple months at least, and we've been several meetings with him, went over things that we feel like, you know, there's also changes that come every year that has to be added regardless, you know, because of regulations, so we have to get all that stuff in. But what he's done is, he's worked on making what changes we feel like needs changed, and he's going to present that once he gets a draft of that to the council to hear the new policies and procedures, and get your opinions on what he's got, or for certain things that need changed, or what we need to do. But before we can do that, we have to repeal the ordinance on the policies and procedures that we have right now, because to make any changes, you've already got a policy and procedures. In order to be able to change that, you've got to repeal that to be able to put the new one. So what we have to do is just to have a reason to repeal that ordinance, and then once he comes and goes over all the new ones, you all make decisions on what you want to do, on any other changes, or anything that may be changed. And then he will upgrade those policies and procedures and make the new for us to approve.
So we won't repeal anything until?
Yeah, the second reading. Okay, we'll take care of that. We'll have to have the first reading now, the second reading. All this is doing is making it a, we will, all, all policy procedure will be done by municipal order. That means basically it's a live document, and we can change it basically on the fly then. I mean, if we see something we want changed, we have one reading of a new municipal order, and it's done. Where as an ordinance, you have to have two readings and a publication, you know, and then go through the process of that. It'll just shorten the process and make it more of a living document now instead of an ordinance.
Is there an expedited timeframe on when he's going to have these readings, or the court?
He's doing the new, he's doing the final draft of it now, and next council meeting, he should be here. Yeah, he just wanted to get everything. And then, once he gets it done, and we get everything, we go through and get everything approved, or if there's any changes made to it, he'll be here to present that, and if there's any changes that we want to add to it, or over what we have thought that we changed, or things that, you know, needed to be added in there. And then, once he does that, then he'll make a draft copy for each department, we'll have a copy here on file, and each one of the departments will have a written copy too. So just something that needed updated, needed to be done, so it's took a while to work on that, but you've got to keep up with that stuff. So he's working on that, but we just have to have this ordinance tonight to, for him to come in and present the new one. So hopefully.
Still don't have a policy and procedure, but?
Yes, yeah. Until the new one goes in.
Would still be operating by the old?
Yes, until the new one goes into effect. But like Tyler said, we'll be able to change that in a, immediately if we want to do something different, or make a change in the policies and procedures. Instead of now, it has to go through an ordinance every time you want to change anything. You have to have two readings to change it, and you'll be able to, if there's something in policies and procedures, too much down the road, you get to think about it and say, we need to change this, then you do that, and you get that change. Okay, the next thing is our municipal road.
Yeah, we got a reading there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we got the first reading.
August three, we did a summary of some of the ordinance. The ordinance, twenty twenty-four, zero, zero, three. Repelling ordinance, twenty eleven, zero, zero, one, and any or all revisions related to this ordinance, the City of Jamestown personal policies. An ordinance repealing ordinance, twenty eleven, zero, zero, one, and/or all revisions related to this ordinance, the City of Jamestown personnel policies, and adopting the City of Jamestown personnel policies as a municipal order.
So once he gets that finished, and comes back, he'll go over all that, all the new ones, and then that's when we'll do any changes or anything, before we put those new ones into order. So our next thing that we need to do is our municipal road aid contract and resolution. And this is something we have every year with the road department, where we get funds for that with the county, so this is just a year thing, this is just that time of year to do that.
Yeah, the contract is just us going into the co-op program. Basically, it's saying that we're going to get forty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars next year. There's a three percent appropriation set aside for emergency fund. You'll get an initial amount, twenty-three, seven, twenty-four, and then the remainder will come through the rest of the year. Just a motion, second, to enter back into this contract with the state committee.
I'd most agree in the contract.
All in favor, any opposed? We also have the resolution.
This is a resolution adopting approved in the execution of municipal aid co-op program contract between the Incorporated City and Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Academy, Department of Rural, Municipal Aid, for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, as provided the state revised statute and setting all streets referred to therein as being streets which are heart and incorporated to.
Any motion on the resolution? Need a second? All in favor, any opposed? We have actually a few people here tonight that we want to recognize. Part of them is people that we want to recognize for years of service, and the other one is one that's decided that he's going to run off and leave us. So first of all, Neil Jackson. Neil, if you want to come up. Neil's been our public works director for a number of years. Neil worked at the city, retired from the city, come back and worked again, and has been the public works director now for seven?
Off and on, just seventeen.
Seventeen. And so he's decided that it's time to retire again, and I can't argue with him, because I just retired. Everything that I would try to say, you know, come back, boy, you did it, so. But Neil's been a big asset to the city, and I guess nobody knows what all goes on. I, for one, had no idea what all went on in the city until I became involved in it. But Neil wears a lot of hats, he deals with all departments, he's done an excellent job, and then he, anything that goes on inside, as working on computers or anything that comes up, that he's just been good and helped do, and we're going to miss that, because it's, it's hard to fill somebody's shoes that's worn that many hats and done such an outstanding job. But anyway, he's decided that's what he's going to do. So we have just a little appreciation for Neil. I think he had a retirement, when he did retire, they had a retirement celebration for him, so this is just kind of something that the city wanted to give you a little something for what you have done, and telling you how much we appreciate how much of a miss you've been here to take care of things. And after a lot of times that I call and say, what is this? You know, I get something, something that we're working on during, or something, and I have to say, what is this? And I'm like, okay, so what I do now? And he said, well, I'll still be around. I said, but I think you're going to be touring the country, so I felt a feeling that when you see that phone call, you're going to hide. Be your answer.
Change my number, I think. I'll check, I'll check that, hey, I've got the same number.
Yeah, I heard the story that they're standing there talking, and that Tyler calls him while he's talking to him to see if he would answer his phone.
Make sure he's doing something.
He said, so make sure you haven't changed your number yet, so. But I think everybody here knows what an asset you've been, and it's going to, it's going to take us a while to adjust, but he said that he'll, he'll be around, and he'll help, and he'll answer questions if anything that comes up, so we just wanting to know how much we appreciate it. Neil, whatever you've got to?
I just thank the City of Jamestown, council members, mayor, all the citizens. It's been thirty bucks, and you did very well.
Thank you.
The City of Jamestown. The City of Jamestown is better because Neil's been here.
He's done an excellent job, and we're not missing him, no doubt. So, but anyway, we can't talk him into staying, so I tried, it didn't work, and I don't know what else to do, unless we just tie him up and tell him out.
You can follow them in food posts. He's the best eating man I've ever seen.
Yeah, I said, what do we do? Are you still going to post those pictures so we know where the good food's at, or anything? He's good at that. He knows where the, where all the good food's at. So anyway, to move on, we've got another thing that we want to go over with some officers that we have to recognize for years of service that they put into the city, and gosh, everybody I'm sure out there knows what it is even to be a police officer, what you have to, and your, what goes on, and how dangerous, and not a lot of respect sometime from people, and you get people that you get a lot of respect from, and you get people that don't know what it is to respect the police officers, but we have a good crew, they're excellent. I've never, I mean, they're just, always hear good names about all of them, never anything bad that seems to go on with them, but just a good group that we want to recognize from their years of service. So, Jeff, if you want to come up. And I'll let you do this, it's for our chief of police.
First, we, well, this, with the fire department last meeting, recognized several of their members, and kind of jog my memory that I've been wanting to do this for a while, so I got this to get there. So we want to recognize Officer Lee Smith with five years of service to the police department, but he's got probably thirty more years' service with another department, so five years' service for doing something. Jamie Rogers, five years of service to the police department, he started his career here at Jamestown, left us, came back, now he serves as a resource officer, so he can get five years of service.
He knows every kid's name, Pat James.
He does, and he is an asset to Jamestown ordinance.
Yes, absolutely.
We have Officer Jeremy England that's receiving the fifteen years of service to Officer Carter could be here tonight, he has a five years of service to Jamestown Police.
You think I should? I was kind of letting it to himself, but you know. Chief Jeff Kearns, of course, he's been with the City of Jamestown for twenty-five years, and does an excellent job. Never, we've had lots of conversations, and believe it or not, they've all been good.
They'll be great, I hope.
Yeah, so he's just done an excellent job, and we just hope he stays around for a long time, so.
Another twenty-five.
Another twenty-five years. So this is just for twenty-five years of service to the City of Jamestown.
Appreciate you guys.
Trying to care her.
Hurry the boat, man. Donnie, we're trying to retreat on the square, and Amy's out there, and all the little kids coming by. There's with Jamie, there's with Jamie. He's rapping their names out.
Well, we have a good police department, we're proud, proud to have them, and thank you all for what you do. Just trying to think what's coming up. We kind of, we have planned on having Marketplace this Saturday, but for some reason, the weather just doesn't want to do what it's supposed to do for us to be able to have a meeting. We've tried to have movie nights two or three times, and we've had to cancel one time of one because of rain. We did have movie night last Friday night, that was a good turnout, weather cooperated, and it was, had a lot of kids, and they seemed to enjoy it, and some of the kids have come out and did, but, so we hope Marketplace, we'll just have to reschedule. We had a plan for Saturday, but we're giving, I think, eighty percent chance of rain tomorrow and seventy or so on Saturday, so, you know, it's just hard to do those things if the weather don't cooperate, getting, looking forward to light fest coming up, that's going to be here before we know it. So we've done, started working on that, and actually have a lot, are we not full with vendors?
Vendors are full.
Vendors are full, got lots of, lots of food, you know, it seems like every year there's, everybody runs out food, and everybody's standing in line forever, but there's only so many spots that you can have, that we have a lot, it seems like more food.
Yeah, seventeen food, and I got several food markets and crafts, more than sure I have.
And of course, the kids, games and rides and stuff that they were, so. But anything going on that anybody wants to talk about, or anybody have anything that we need to discuss?
Have entertainment for light fest, can reveal that yet, or is that a secret or what?
Well, it's usually a secret up till close to time, but I feel like it's close to time, I like to. And we kind of tried to go a different route this year, just because of expense, and along with that expense comes, you know, every year, everything goes up, so what you could get before, it's up a lot more expensive now again. And then, two, we had to stop and think, you know, we've been terrified of bad weather the last few, four, five, six, because last year was the worst, I mean, it was every minute thinking it was going to come a storm, and we blacked out, but you have to pay that regardless. If you get rain now, and you can't have it, then you still have to pay that. So we looked at some groups that are, and Neil probably, I think, knows a little more about their tribute groups, but they're really big, big groups that are very popular, have been around, and they send in the information that we listen to, and so one of them, I'll can't tell it, one of them, we're going to have a contribute to Heart, and then we're going to have a contribute to Journey, and we're also going to look at trying to fill the stage over here during the afternoon too, with local groups, people local that, and then, you know, we may come up with somebody else to add, but so far, we have contracts with those two groups. Should be very entertaining. Should be very entertaining and should be a little bit for everybody. They, they're just really, really top rated groups and we, one of the Heart groups, I know they've had followers from everywhere and I think the Journey group also, so Journey will be our, we listen to them.
This is the heart group that we had, we had here for?
The same group that was here at Rockford Monroe and they were amazing. We just had so many people that, you know, called and was really impressed with them. People here from different states that follow them and they sound just like the original group, so. So we hope that, you know, it's a, it's a cost saving for the city to go this route and you get to the point that you have to look at things like that. You wanna provide something for the people, you wanna provide entertainment, you wanna have good things going on, you wanna have a fun night for, you know, a couple nights for everybody. Also, we're gonna have restaurants again, right? We've done that book, cornhole tournaments, pageants going on.
Tractors, cars.
Sorry?
Tractors.
Tractors and the cars and then kids' games and parade and hopefully the weather will hold out, but so it, it'll be a big day, be a big weekend and I think that the music will be very exciting if people, people that come out, I think they're gonna enjoy it. So anybody have any questions or anything that they want to talk about or discuss? If not, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Thank you all.